Welcome, everyone, to the February 27th City Council Work Session. We have two interesting items this evening. We have urban goat keeping and plastic bag ban. So we're going to start out, oh, we're going to do first, we're going to do community reports and items of interest. So, I'll start over here. Do you have anything?
I went to the Valentine's Day Party at First Place, St. Vincent de Paul's family and childcare place on Amazon. And it was a party to recognize all their volunteers for all the great work that they do. And that was a lot of fun. And otherwise, no, I don't have too much else. Spent a lot of time going over this week's packet, so, kind of how I spent my weekend.
George?
Just one thing. The Willackenzie Crossing, affordable housing right across from the old Willackenzie School Site. If, I understood what the gentleman was telling me, the, they're building it in three phases, and Phase One is already pretty much occupied. They're taking applications for Phase Two, and Phase Three is still currently under construction. But it's really an amazing-looking project, and it's, it's filling up fast. So, it's a great thing that the property was land-banked many years ago for this project. And I think it's going to be a real good added, add to our community, especially the Willackenzie area there.
Betty?
Well, the newest thing I've heard is people are upset about turkeys. And I think we should do something about them.
You mean wild turkeys?
Yes, wild ones in the South Hills.
Turn the goats loose on, I got a lot of turkey.
So, I'm driving down Blair today, and I look up, and I see two huge displaying turkeys.
On Blair?
On Blair. Standing there, there's a couple females just eating a little grass, something out there, and these two toms are just, you know, their faces are bright blue, their combs are red, and they got those feathers puffed out like they were really shining on.
It's that time of year.
Yep.
Well, I heard that in the South Hills, they're becoming a real problem, the turkey manure and...
Eight thirty at a time.
And, you know, I heard there's flocks of twenty or thirty of them, and this person said that they fly through the electric wires, and he thinks they could start a fire some the hell.
I've seen them a few times, just walking up and down Fourth, too, and hopping down the neighbors' driveways.
They irritate my dog.
They irritate Lucy.
That's the issue. Lucy's one of the complaints.
Alrighty. Anything else, Betty?
No, thanks.
Alan?
So, they're in Laurel Hill Valley, too, and in my neighborhood, and I was actually at a meeting at Laurel Hill Valley where they brought in the wildlife folks, the State Department. And the main thing that they said is, "Do not feed them, because they will come back." So if you don't like them, don't feed them.
Oh, if I, yeah, if I may add something, this person suggested we pass a law against feeding the turkeys.
Yeah. See how we enforce that. There's two upcoming neighborhood meetings in my part of town. Fairmont Neighbors is meeting tomorrow night, Fairmont Neighbors at the Laurelwood Golf Courts at 7:00 PM, and the West University Neighbors are meeting on Wednesday at the usual place at the church at 7:00 PM.
Thanks. Chris?
I don't have anything pressing right now, I'll pass.
Okay. Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I have been having a lot of fun this last couple, this last month, actually. So, the EMS Task Force, Ambulance Transport Task Force, has been hard at work. They've done, we had like a mock code this last Thursday where they did a scenario around somebody having a heart attack, and it showed the other members of the task force the, what it takes to get somebody into CPR and transport and all that. So that was pretty good. They also showed us some footage on, they had this Medtronic electronic baby, critical care babies that were in this mock accident, and they showed how the, when they ran the scenarios, how the vital signs of the babies and the level of mentation and all this, so that it gave them real-time experience, because we don't have a whole lot of sick or injured children here, which is actually a good thing. The mayor and I and Pat and, I don't know who else was there, we're at the NAACP Dinner this last Saturday, and it was well-attended, and there was some really good speakers, and the youth performers from the ACO Group were just fabulous. I was really impressed. And actually, well, Sandra's not here, but Sandra Stubbs, our recorder, our city recorder, actually did the benediction in the opening prayer.
She was great.
She was great. It was awesome. I'll show you the backgrounds of all her employees. I had lunch with the mayor and the mayor of...
Littleton.
Littleton, Colorado.
Talking about immigration issues.
About immigration, integration. And the two things that I took away from that was, as we do this work in the community, those of us that are working on it, the things to focus on are on citizenship, the English language learning. Also, you know, there's a few of us that are working on the Opportunity Task Force, and I think that there's a lot of work going here. Those recommendations will be coming to the council, and I hope you guys can, you know, if you aren't, I don't know if they're on the email list or not, if the work that we're doing, is everybody?
I don't know.
I mean, I really think it'd be beneficial for those councilors who aren't there to be able to review the work that's going on, because it's going to be a lot when it comes to us. And I think that the more background that people have on that, the better. And also with the EMS ambulance issue, I forwarded some information about some of the programs that we have here within the city that are, I think, you know, we can look back as we talk about ambulance transport in our budget cycle. Thank you, Mayor.
Pat?
Thank you. We'd be remiss to not mention it, that Sandra's husband was playing the piano, and her mom spoke, his mother, her mother-in-law spoke for a while, and her sister, I believe, sang, or her sister-in-law sang, and her daughter sang.
I don't think it was her husband.
No, it was Carl's, her husband.
That's why he looked weird at me when I said, "Never mind." That explains a lot.
Part of the larger Stubbs family.
Yeah, that is.
Okay, my apologies.
They're very talented.
Very good pianist, nonetheless. Couple of weeks ago, the Bethel Education Foundation was honored with a, with an award at the El Cog meeting. And on Friday night, they had their first trivia night at Willamette High School. It was really, really a blast. They, I'm not sure how much they raised, but a lot of people were there. While the Willamette girls were playing in a state basketball playoff game in the adjacent gymnasium, it was just jammed. So I just want to congratulate the Bethel Education Foundation. They're doing a superb job, again, things off the ground there, to help teachers with grants, classroom grants. So, thank you.
No, I'll just wrap it up. I, it's been a while. Sometimes there's so much going on that something that's just a few days ago seems like ancient history. But, so we had some really fine presentations on transit-oriented development from some speakers that came into the community on connecting communities and how that stimulates economic development. It was very interesting to hear. The Opportunity Eugene, again, working on the homeless things, I think, I appreciate what Andrew was saying. My only thing I can add to that, and Chris is there, and Pat's there, and George is there, you have a lot of council to, who are listening to this, and they're, I think everybody who's participated has been very dedicated to trying to have something really good and doable in the short, medium, and long run, and come out of that. So it'll be very interesting to see where we end, if they're working hard on it right now. And other than that, did a little presentation to the Easy Careers of parents, of young children with disabilities, and that was an interesting experience, too, lots of things all the time. City manager?
I don't have anything at this time, Mayor.
All right. Yes?
One more piece about the Opportunity Task Force. It's been, it's been really a good experience, because I think with everybody in the room, there's, everybody has different ideas, and there's a lot of sharing, cross-pollination going on around things that are in our community that, you know, I think I'm in the know, but a lot of things that I don't know about, and, you know, that are really accessible, and what people are doing in other parts of the city to address these issues. And I just, you know, I just, I think that that's one of the pearls of that, that meeting.
How many people are at those meetings?
About fifty.
I think the biggest thing that comes out of that is, some people who have newer interest in the issue don't know a lot about what's gone on before, and so they've learned a lot. And some of the folks who've been working on it for a long time are getting their eyes open to fresh perspectives that are more current. So I think there is that core, very important cross-learning that is about what people have done and what we need to be moving on now. And that's kind of the important piece of bringing all those folks together. I also just wanted to comment that I've really appreciated the participation of the mission in that, because I think they've kind of opened people's eyes to their sort of new and fresh approach to dealing with homeless issues, and I, I think that's going to be very helpful to everybody as we move forward. So, I'm, it's a lot of hopeful, hopeful things in a very tough issue, but it's a good thing we're having the conversation, I think. Okay, so, with that, I'm going to close off that part of the meeting, and moving along pretty rapidly this evening, we're going to now begin our goat conversation.
Are you doing goats or plastic bags?
I know you're going to have a lot of smart remarks, just because we can't resist.
Mike McCarron, you'll lead us in this discussion.
I will lead.
You'll shepherd us in this.
Shepherd, yes.
Don't make him feel bad.
It's already beginning. I have a volunteer to keep track of the puns. But good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Mike McCarron. I'm here with information about goats. And the farm animal standards in the Land Use Code have been around for quite a while. And if certain conditions are met, you are able to keep farm animals within the city limits, if certain conditions are met. And goats are allowed in agricultural or R1 zone lots if it's at least 20,000 square feet or larger. 5,000 square feet in lot size is required for each goat. So, that means if you had one of these large parcels of 20,000 square feet, you could have up to four goats on that parcel. So, if we think about that, that's almost half an acre, so that's quite a large lot, much larger than average. If you could picture perhaps a 400-foot by 500-foot lot, that's, there's not a whole lot of those around. Typical lot might have a street frontage of maybe 100 feet or less typically. So, Eugene has had fewer of these large lots than we did 20 years ago or even 10 years ago, and over time, these typically will be partitioned into smaller lots. Lots in the older part of town, close to downtown, might be in the 6,000, 8,000 square foot range, and those averages will increase a little bit as you get away from the urban core. So, the farm animal standards require an enclosure for goats. They require shelters, be at least 10 feet from a property line or 25 feet from another neighbor's dwelling. They also have sanitation standards, which will help minimize any odors that are associated with the animals. So, staff has looked at some of the jurisdictions to see what their codes say about goats. Springfield is fairly similar to Eugene, and they allow two pygmy goats on low density residential lots, again, 20,000 square feet, but they require 10,000 square feet per goat, where Eugene requires 5,000. Seattle, Seattle, Portland, and Berkeley all focus their standards to miniature goats, so that would include only pygmy and dwarf. And pygmy and dwarf goats typically are about 24 inches tall, can range from 50 to 100 pounds in weight. So Seattle allows them, and they group them in a category of small animals, and that includes pot-bellied pigs and also rabbits. And any of these three animals in the category can be in a residential lot. Miniature goats must be dehorned, and males have to be neutered. I understand they can be quite smelly at times of the year. Offspring are allowed until they're weaned, but no longer than three months old. And Seattle does require an annual license and a $30 fee. Portland has some similar requirements. They group pygmy goats with chickens, ducks, doves, pigeons, and rabbits. And you can have three of these animals in the category if they are enclosed, sanitation is maintained, and again, helping with the odor issue. You can actually go above three, but having four or more of these small animals requires a permit from the city with inspections and an annual fee. There's also a variance process if you have some extenuating circumstances. And in Berkeley, you're allowed up to two female goats per lot in most residential areas, but they don't allow male goats at all. So, in 2010, the City Council reviewed the Community Climate and Energy Action Plan, and also more recently, looked at Food Security Scoping and Resource Plan. Both of these plans discuss urban agriculture. Both of the plans recommended that Eugene's Land Use Code be revised to provide for additional opportunities for urban agriculture and microlivestock. The Envision Eugene draft proposal also includes a similar strategy to facilitate urban agriculture by evaluating and removing barriers in the land use code and permitting processes in accordance with the Scoping and Resource Plan. So the policy direction is clear. Urban agriculture and microlivestock subject, including goats, is worth exploring. At this time, the Land Use Code amendment process is not scheduled for this topic. However, proposals to increase allowance for goats, chickens, and other microlivestock within the city will occur during amendments as part of the Envision Eugene process. So thank you for your attention. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I'm going to have George Brown go first, because he brought this topic forward, and then I've got George Polley and Betty in the queue.
Yeah, I thank you for the information. I want to thank Stuart Ramsay. He provided me with copies of the ordinances of 11 other cities, and I reviewed all of those, and compared them, compared and contrasted, and I've got some suggestions. I mean, I'd like to write those down a little bit in finer detail in my second round, but for the first round, I'd like to kind of address, like, why are we doing this? It's kind of like a statement of purpose. I think that the two ordinances that had the best, most cogent statement of purpose were Seattle and Lacey, Washington. So I'd just like to read those. This is from Seattle. This is for their ordinance. Whereas goats, along with dogs, are the earliest animals domesticated by humans roughly 10,000 years ago, and whereas numerous cultures worldwide keep goats, and more people worldwide drink goat milk than any other animals, whereas miniature goats are considered excellent pets due to their good-natured personalities, friendliness, faithfulness, hearty constitution, whereas miniature goats are no bigger than a number of species of large domestic dogs, whereas miniature goats can be a sound way to provide milk and cheese to families, whereas there are numerous benefits for urban sustainability that goats provide, including that their manure is an excellent source of garden compost. That's from Seattle. That addresses the desires of the proponents of miniature urban goat keeping. Lacey relates more to growth policies and the idea of sustainable food sources and protecting the food supply, expanding the local food supply. This is what Lacey says. The city of Lacey finds that there is a need to accommodate farm activity, commonly referred to as urban agriculture. This can include a range of activities, such as production of food on a single-family residential lot for a family's personal use, urban vegetable gardens on common property for community use, or small commercial farm activity located in area zone for this use. While agricultural activity has often been considered inconsistent with smart-growth principles of accommodating density in urban areas, the two do not need to be mutually exclusive. Urban agriculture activity for personal use on individual, single-family lots or common property for community agriculture use, or in the form of small, commercial urban farms, can add to the urban fabric and create a richer context for urban neighborhoods. These beneficial uses can be accommodated without sacrificing the objectives of the State Growth Management Act and designated urban areas. Urban agricultural activities managed in a responsible way with sensitivity to urban density and land use compatibility issues can benefit the individuals participating in the activity and the community at large by providing fresh produce, additional food choices, economic development activity, a more sustainable lifestyle, and urban areas, neighborhoods with more variety and interest.
And I'll put you in the next round.
Sure.
Thank you.
George Polley?
Couple of questions real quick. Do Nubian goats fall in the pygmy-dwarf category?
Quite understanding as they do according to almost all these ordinances.
Okay. And then you mentioned that one of the ordinances that you researched had a $30 annual fee. Is that per animal or is that per residence?
I'd be per residence.
Per residence, okay. You know, there are definitely pluses to move forward with this. You know, I had a nephew, I've got a nephew that when he was a baby was allergic to cow's milk, so my brother and sister-in-law had two Nubian goats, and turned out, of the seven children they had, I think three or four of them were allergic to cow's milk. So they kept the goats around just, just for the milk. So, you know, there is a plus there, you know. You know, the, some of the points that George was reading are really, really worthwhile. I do have some concerns, and I don't know how we're going to address this, if this goes forward and we change our ordinances, about the complaints once they start coming in. And I'm sure we'll get some, you know. We're having a hard enough time, as it is right now, just handling complaints on dogs. So my question is, are we looking at how some of these other communities enforce their ordinances, who handles them, and how are they, how are they enforcing them? Like I said, we're having problems as it is right now with just handling dogs. And then if this is included in the Envision Eugene process, is there a need to move forward with any, anything else, or wait until the Envision Eugene process is concluded? And if changes aren't made, then move forward with, with an ordinance change, or how would we do that?
You wouldn't, you wouldn't need to do anything, take any action now. What we would be doing is, as part of that Envision Eugene process, this will be a part of that as that plays itself out. So you don't need to take any action now if you're comfortable with us putting it in that context, which includes micro...
Livestock.
Livestock, as well as more of that urban farming in the broader sense.
Well, and I don't think it's a, the urban farming, I think that's not a passing fad. I think it's something that we're going to see for many years in the future, so maybe it's, it's time that we do take a real long and hard look at that and look for some more input, and see, see what else we can glean off of other cities' experiences.
Betty?
Did I understand you to say that goats are already allowed on large lots?
They are.
Then why are we talking about allowing, they're already allowed? Then we don't need to change anything, right?
I think the, part of the question is, is allowing them in more places. So right now, you have to have an almost half acre in order to have any goats. And, you know, from some of the public comment we've received, there are people in the community that would like to allow goats, perhaps pygmy goats or dwarf goats on property that's less than 20,000 square feet, less than a half acre. So it's really eventually deciding if you want to allow goats on more properties than are currently allowed.
Okay. Are they, are full-size goats currently allowed on the large slots?
The current Land Use Code doesn't make a distinction between full-size and the miniature goats.
Between male and female?
It doesn't make that distinction either.
Oh. Okay, I can imagine some real complaints if people had them. I used to live near some.
I have mercy goats.
If we do, if we have them, I, if we have a lot, I think that each goat should have a license, just as each dog has to have a license. And then I have another question. People do eat goats. When you talk about food, would they be allowed to slaughter them in town? Are they anywhere where they have goats?
The codes that staff researched recently in preparation for the work session didn't address that issue. So I'm not sure how other jurisdictions handle that.
But there are a lot of people who eat them. Yeah. So that's something we probably should think about if we're, that's all. Thank you.
Alan?
So are we allowed to, how does, how does, I noticed that cows, horses, sheep, goats, emis, and llamas are all 20,000 square foot lots, quarter acre or more. How do they handle, some of those are, some of those probably are being used for slaughter for meat, maybe not for horses so much, but how do we deal with that currently on a larger lot?
Well, the, like the other standards in the Land Use Code, farm animal standards are administered or enforced on a complaint basis, and in checking with staff to do that enforcement. It's very rare to get a complaint about goats, perhaps one or two a year. And I don't, having worked with that, that team for quite a while in the past, I don't remember us ever getting a question about slaughtering animals.
Any animals, yeah.
So, to me, well, what, I had this interesting question about why Berkeley's so discriminatory against male goats.
It's the smell. It's the smell.
They smell worse than the female goats?
Yeah.
Very much so.
A lot worse, huh? Okay. That answers my question then. And I'm not surprised. And so, I think one of the things that we would be thinking about would be to reduce these, take the, maybe just pygmy goats or miniature goats and put them in a different category that didn't have the size restrictions on them. I guess that's what we'd be thinking about coming back to, and treating them more like dogs in that regard, probably limiting the number of, what do we have, three now with dogs on any residential property? Maybe some kind of thing like that. Right now, our code says up to two rabbits, or fowl. Is there such a thing as two rabbits?
Not for long.
Not for long.
Okay. So I guess, you know, that, that sounds reasonable to me. I'm not sure of the difference between a miniature goat and a larger goat in terms of how they, how they would be dealt with in a property circumstance. So I'm not sure if we just want to limit them to miniature goats or pygmy goats. And the other one is that both Seattle and Springfield have this, I guess, just, just Seattle has the pot-bellied pigs in there as well, and wondering if that's something we would look at, too. Not that you could have this entire menagerie in your house. I mean, you want to limit, limit how many you'd have on a particular property, but...
I think that would all be a part of the conversation with Envision Eugene, because that really contemplates a broader than just goats. And part of it is coming out of the Climate and Energy Action Plan, where we talk about food security and all those things, and so that would, excuse me, that would contemplate, could be pot-bellied pigs or anything else that's part of that fuller ordinance.
Okay.
Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm in agreement that we just need to change the minimum lot size for the animals, and I do think that we should also have that language as far as pygmy or Nubian, the smaller goats. I think that'd be a good idea. And as far as slaughtering them, you know, the only thing that we're not allowed to do right now is shoot off a firearm in the city limits, so I would assume that if somebody was going to do that, you know, that's a preview to, you know, if they're eating the goat. Otherwise, taking it to a slaughterhouse, I think, is pretty expensive, so I would imagine that people would be responsible and not leave, you know, carcasses laying around. I mean, I can't imagine that anybody wants to live like that, so I don't really think that we should try and dictate what people use their food for, whether they're animals or their gardens, or their chickens. I mean, I had my criminal histories, and I had 18 chickens at one time in my, in my yard. And after I got a ticket for them, they were dealt with, so...
Dealt with?
Delicious.
How many in your freezer?
They were old roosters, and they were just old, so, but they were pretty. Wood Island Reds are very pretty. Anyway, that's all I have to say, Mayor.
Keep your hands up.
I can't resist. I trust you to do the right thing. But has anybody considered the problem of feral wild goats? What if they got loose?
Yeah. Cows on highway.
Are you done?
I'm done.
I'm just trying to think of something really... So I think the serious part about this is if, if indeed anybody did just process their animal for food, they'd have to meet the same... animal for food, they'd have to meet the same kind of health and sanitation standards that we would expect anybody to have. So that's sort of covered within that anyway, right? So we wouldn't expect to, that we would be allowing things to go on that would create any health and safety standards in the, in the problems in the area. The other thing that I think is important for you to think about as you do this is one side of it is the regulatory side and the other side is what you're trying to encourage, what you're trying to stimulate. And so the larger discussion is if we're really interested in food security and we're really interested in trying to do that in a good way, that we not approach this in a piece by piece and we not approach it without a larger context of the conversation so we can really think about what we can do to have the best results we'd like to have in the, in the community. And that can be from an incentive side. You may, on the, on one hand, you could think about licensing because that might help you with the regulatory needs, but on the other hand, if you really want this to happen and you want to make it easy for people to do it, to meet some of our other goals, then you need to kind of think of it from, from both of those perspectives, I think. Because the whole deal here with, in my view, with Envision Eugene is to figure out what we want to have and try to aim our, the tools that we have to, to move us in that direction. And if this is one of the things that we want to support and do in a good way in our community, then we need to really put some expertise, probably more than most of us have, bring to bear and really do this in a, in a good way that shows that this is what we really do want to have happen in our community. We want to do it in the right way and we want to help people meet the standards that we'd like them to meet. So I think it is a much deeper and broader conversation than this one work session.
If you get too many, call Aunt Counselor Ortiz.
Yeah, she knows how to get rid of them. Chris, did you have something you had to say?
Yeah. In listening to the conversation, I'm thinking, it is, it's a larger topic than just goats because I'm thinking, what's the ultimate outcome for why you're doing this? I mean, the obvious question is, why do you keep goats? Why do you keep chickens? Why do you keep dogs or cats? And obviously some people would keep them as pets. And I can imagine that there would be people who would keep pot-bellied pigs or would keep goats or something as a pet. And they would treat it like a pet and it would operate in their environment like a pet. Others would be, for them it would be farming, animal husbandry. I mean, they're, they're raising crops, they're, they're farming on a, on a residential property, which raises the issue of to what degree does the city want to facilitate or endorse full-scale farming in residential neighborhoods, on residential property? I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, but the original idea of residential property is it's where you live. And if, and if you're trying to turn it into a farm, what degree can you turn a small lot into a full-fledged farm or something approaching it? And so that middle category where it's still a residence, these aren't pets, they're still some sort of animal, but it's not a full-fledged farm, I think is what we're struggling with. What the heck does that look like? I don't know what that looks like. People may want to grow corn or crop. People have been growing things in their backyards. People have chickens in their backyards. And I think we're exploring this area of how do you try to, to approach farming in a residential property that isn't really full-fledged farming? Because right now we have created a size restriction, I think is an acknowledgement that people are trying to create farms and you really can't do that in, in less than 20,000 square feet, or at least not easily do that. So my question would be, if someone wants to keep a pygmy goat, are they keeping a pygmy goat more to the pet direction or are they really keeping it as a farm animal? And if so, how well does a pygmy goat operate as a farm animal? To what degree can it benefit you as a farm animal? Maybe it does. I mean, I'm not that familiar with how it works. But for me, that's the struggle here is how far down the road of turning residential property into farms is comfortable, particularly in a neighborhood context. If, if I'm living in a neighborhood and one of them wants to turn their residence into a farm, how does that impact the rest of the neighborhood? And that's a consideration. What is the consideration? It's not just the smell, there's a whole variety of other factors that need to be taken into consideration. So I think proceeding very cautiously in terms of larger impacts weighed against what's the real outcome someone's trying to achieve here, for me, is what would really be, it's not how many goats or whether you license them or not, it's what's the real, what's the real outcome we're trying to achieve and how does that impact the neighborhood overall?
So we're going to try to close this off by quarter after and I think that's right. Actually, I have until, well, we have plenty of time. Okay, so got George Brown and then George Pauling and then Pat.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so Stuart Ramsing supplied me with 11 other cities' ordinances and I analyzed them all, sifted through. Some I didn't find particularly helpful for our situation, so I set those, they were either too vague or way too restrictive for what we're trying to do here, so I set those aside. Oh, by the way, I'll just do a quick rundown. St. Paul, Minnesota, Tom Water, Washington, Vancouver, Washington, Hillsborough, Berkeley, California, Seattle, Austin, Texas, Portland, Lacey, Washington, Charlottesville, Virginia, and Denver, Colorado. So I took the ones that I deemed more useful and more directly addressed to our concerns or what I perceive our concerns are and goals. And I looked at all of those and I found some commonalities to all of those policies. So I've kind of created a menu here of the best ideas from each policy that I think would work, I think would work really well here. First of all, the, it only applies to pygmy, dwarf, or miniature goats, 100 pounds or less. Second, three seems to be a good number. A lot of cities agree that three is a pretty good number. That comforts, we know that goats are social animals, they're herd animals, they're actually happier with one or two other goats at least. Some setbacks are required, any from, you know, from other residences, 10 to 15 feet seems to be kind of an average setback. It's, I'm not sure what the setback is that we have now for chickens, but it would be kind of like that. Most don't charge a permit for licensing for three or less animals. If you go over three, then you have to pay an annual permit. Kind of like, you know, we can have, in Eugene now, we can have three dogs and you pay for each dog, but you can have three, but you can't have four. So, I mean, it's kind of related to that. I think Denver has the best idea for lot size. Quote, "There must be at least 130 square feet of permeable land area for each dwarf goat." So you could have three goats and that would be 390 square feet. That's 20 by 20. The reason is they're miniature, they're small, they're not standard size. 10,000, 20,000 square feet is, is way too big of a requirement and prohibits almost anybody that I know that wants to do this from, from doing it. But that refers to standard-sized goats. The miniature goats, I've heard from people that know, and they trust their opinion, they're happy on small lots. They're happy being with each other, they're happy being with their masters. They're very sociable for hu, with humans too.
Another round, George?
Oh, yes, please.
Okay, George Pauling.
I'll pass.
All right. Pat?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I, the first blush just seems like a relatively trivial thing to be discussing for 45 minutes at a city council meeting. However, it does point out as a mayor and Counselor Pryor suggested that it's, it's part of a larger picture of food production inside the urban growth boundary. And we have livestock versus truck farming, two very different things. And I think whatever we decide, whatever you decide to bring forward to us regarding pygmy goats, it is really a part of a bigger picture of how do we supply food to the people who need food. And as the city, cities become denser, it becomes even more critical. And as transportation becomes more difficult, it becomes even more critical for food to be grown as close to the place it's consumed as possible. So this is a, is a part of a larger picture. And we do have examples inside of our city limits of, of working farms. At Foodfaring County, we have the grassroots garden out on Coburg Road. We also have a full-scale farm, the youth farm out in Springfield, which is in a residential neighborhood. So as we move forward, we do have examples to look at. And I would encourage that we do indeed move forward with allowing the production of food inside the city limits, in fact, encouraging the production of food inside the city limits. Thank you.
Betty, you're next.
Do goats get fleas?
I do not know the answer to that.
That's something that might spread if they do. I, and I wonder, the people that, with places that allow three goats, could, we now can have three dogs, could you have three dogs and three goats and two rabbits and, and numerous cats?
Oh, my.
All in the same lot?
And that's where the other jurisdictions have defined groups. A lot of them will say small animals. This includes chickens, rabbits, miniature goats, and then there's a limitation, there's some flexibility when you can pick what types of animals you want, that there might be a limit on the number. So that could be part of the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
George Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just continue with some of the ideas that I pulled out that seem to be common to most of the ordinances. Nearly all of them prohibit commercial activities. In other words, you can make yogurt, you can make milk, you can make cheese, you can collect the wool, you cannot sell it. You have to use it for, and the idea, the people that want to do this are obviously, from what we heard from the testimony of a few months ago from the proponents of urban goat keeping, was that this is intended for their family use. And we know, I know this from working in a grocery store all these years, that many of our customers are cow milk intolerant or their children are. They just, they cannot handle it, they have a terrible allergy to it. But goat milk will satisfy and it's a great source of protein. So, but, but all, most of the ordinances do prohibit commercial activity. They all require proper sanitation, just like you would for chickens or just like you would for your three dogs or any other animal that you have. You cannot allow odors to build up, you cannot allow flies, you cannot allow problems that, any, any situation that's going to cause problem for your neighbors. So that, that's addressed in just about every ordinance. Complaint, and, and most suggest that any, any kind of inspection is complaint-driven, just like it is now. And I'm just wondering, I don't know if we have any statistics about, I know that we relaxed the rules governing number of chickens. We're like not enforcing the ordinance. I'm just wondering, since we've done that, how many complaints have, has the city received regarding the chicken policy? You don't have to answer that right now. I think I've covered most of the commonalities and I kind of hate to see this get swallowed up by Envision Eugene because I'm afraid it's kind of like going down the memory hall or the black hole. Because, you know, the staff is so busy with the, the discussion about expanding the urban growth boundary, whether to expand it or not and how much that, I'd hate to see any of these ideas regarding, you know, urban goat keeping and whatever else we want to talk about get thrown into that mix because I think it'll just disappear. And the people that want to do this, they'd like to start now because kids are going to be coming up and it's a great time to get work on your shed and get your fences up, separating from the neighbors, separating from your own vegetable garden, get the sheds for shelter. So I'd like to see it move a little faster than that.
I'm going to come along, Chris, but I, I want to sort of think about this a little bit because we do have people who are eager to, in some way to be, to begin to have some goats in the backyard farming. And I don't know if there's something we could do in the short run while we look at the larger picture or not, but that would be something I would be interested in, in whether there's a limited way of, of addressing that for a limited amount of time while we, while we move to looking at the broader picture. And I guess when I think about Envision Eugene, I think of that as a whole lot of different things that feed in, into that. So I don't necessarily think they go there to be drowned in it, I think they just add, add to it. And so there will be many things that we'll have to look at that will add and have to be integrated into that, just like our transportation plans are going to have to be integrated into it and all of those things. And that's the notion that we get all of, everything moving in the same direction and really try to use the resources we have to achieve the goals that we want, want to achieve. So the other thing that I'm kind of interested in is an interesting thing about the commerce issue because there's, there's sort of like your, you know, your own little commerce where you go out and sell your jams or you sell your small things that you produce where it's not like a big commercial activity. I don't know if there's some place in between in that particular issue you should be thinking about because people may make some things they want to sell with some of the fiber or something that they get from their, things that they're growing or raising. So I just, I don't, I don't necessarily close that door entirely either. Chris?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go quickly. One thing that I would be interested in hearing more about too would be the notion of how you would manage the enforcement.
Pardon me.
Right now, it's a challenge to enforce the dog ordinance right now. So if you had issues with, whether it's chickens, goats, or whatever, you know, if there are complaints, how do we manage the enforcement of that? What is the mechanism for financing the enforcement? You can create all the rules you want to, but if you don't have an enforcement mechanism, they don't, they don't matter. So would licensing do that? Would some sort of a fee do that? What might be some mechanisms for providing the ability to enforce any of the urban farming mechanisms that we want, want to put in place and so that you could make sure that good regulations make good neighbors in that kind of sense?
Andrea, schedule.
George, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I guess we're about ready to end this discussion. Well, you know, you know, when I, when I mentioned I didn't want to see it get swallowed up in Envision Eugene, I did, I meant no criticism of Envision Eugene, but it's just that I think that they've got their plate full right now. So what I would like to propose, I guess I'll make a motion. And I'll, so I'll speak to it briefly if I get a second. I would like to move to direct the manager to have staff research an ordinance in the very near future that would allow up to three goats and 400 square feet. And that could be dropped down if, if there were, there were objections, there are logical objections to it. And also that would require setting aside the restrictions on the existing ordinance, the square footage. Maybe keep that as part of it, but for, for full-sized animals, I think that's a good, I think that's a good rule for, to have that square, square footage for large animals. But we're not talking about large animals. This would allow people to get started on it within the next month or two because it's kind of that time of the year. So.
Is there a second? Also, but I want to add some things.
Okay. Well, that's the idea is to allow, you know, because we heard from the proponents, we heard from them last year, they were very eloquent and it was obvious to me that, that they're the type of people that are going to be totally responsible and take care of their animals and not cause a sanitation or odor problem and, and use the products for their family. And some of them had children who are allergic to cow's milk. So, and I think that we find that most, that's going to be the type of person that's going to do this. I don't think people are going to casually go out and say, hey, we can have goats now, let's just go get some goats. I think the people that will use them will be, will be responsible, animal lovers. So, and I, I really don't want to wait till next year to do this. I think we can start it now.
Andrea?
So if you will accept a modification to it, I would like for staff to come back, but I would like to make sure that it includes pygmy goats, that we're really specific about the type of goats if we're-
That's what I mean, only, only, yeah.
Down to the square footage. And that the language also has either two goats or two bunnies or two roosters. You know, I'm really concerned that if, you know, they get two roosters and two goats, that's all, you know, that's not, it's not Noah's Ark, you know? So we want to keep it, keep it limited. So that language, whatever, is in other ones. And I think that, I think those are probably my biggest concerns.
Well, I will, I will accept that, but, but it, I, I admit that for it to only apply to, to miniature, pygmy.
Emily, did you get that motion?
How many square feet did you say?
Four hundred.
Four hundred.
Yes.
For three.
And-
A maximum of three animals.
Before I have her-
Very near future.
I said two, I'm sorry. I really think that two is-
Well, that could be modified after, whatever we get back from the manager.
Can you read it?
Okay.
All right.
I'll go with three.
Then I would after she read it.
All right. Read it, please, Emily. Yeah, we may want to specify-
Yeah, we may want to specify a time that works with staff, but at this point, my understanding is the motion is to direct staff to come back with draft language, draft code language that would allow up to three pygmy miniature Nubian goats on lots up to 400 square feet, including a limit on the total number of animals that a particular property...
George, Pauling?
Would this be subject to a public hearing prior to taking action on it?
Yes, it would.
Sure.
You said up to, is it up to or not less than?
I guess I was done.
Because I, if you say, if it's up to 400 square feet, then I could have three goats on 20 square feet.
Oh, I'm sorry, up to three animals.
On a lot of, no less than four.
No less than.
No less than 400.
Good point, yeah.
I don't think it was a, I don't think it was a lot, I thought it was a, there was a grassy area.
A space, yeah.
Impermeable surface.
Impermeable surface.
And what's the total number of animals?
At this point, the direction is three, is my understanding.
Three total animals.
Three goats.
Oh, no, we didn't get direction until animals. I think that there's some leeway for staff to, to look at that.
With the restriction on total?
So I thought I heard you say in a language, only Nubian goats.
Miniature or pygmy.
Did you say that, Emily?
Yeah.
It said pygmy, Nubian, or miniature.
Okay.
Or dwarf.
Dwarf.
Or dwarf. And I, I think the understanding is that staff will have some leeway to capture the intent and, uh, I, I think it would be wise to get some clarity on timing. Mm-hmm. Teve Banzer?
Thank you, Mayor. I have some concerns about the timing, and it, whether or not you choose to go with miniature goats would be fine, but, you know, part of the, it's the same staff as working on budgets, they're working on envision Eugene, we're working on just a whole lot of things. And so I do have some concern, and it's the same with the, the next item. Great things to bring back, they're just, particularly if you want to have people have a chance to do it in the spring, it, there's no way we'll get this back till probably May or June at the earliest. Oh, yeah, absolutely. And even then, so it, that's just my concern, is that there's just, the same people work on the same things, and so something else won't happen. The enforcement, I'm not sure how we're going to enforce it. The same people are talking about animal services right now, and that's part of the enforcement conversation. So it's, so for me, on the, on the timing, um, you know, it would have, it would have to be as we get into the summer, past the summer. We can come back and talk about what we would suggest as a timeline, but that, my concern is just the ability to meet an expectation that some, other things will stop, which you also have expectations for, so...
Priorities. George?
Well, I was also going to add the timing of this, and also the enforcement issue because of the problems that we're facing with Lain County, Lain County Animal Control. And also, it sounds like there's already work being done on this by the city. Let it process through and, and take it, you know, as it comes to us. I'm not opposed, I'm not saying at this point I'm opposed to allowing the goats, I just think we've already got something started working on it. We've rushed something through, and then what happens down the line if something changes and these people are out, the, the cost of building shelters or whatever? I think we should just go ahead and let it process through. So I'm, I'm not going to be able to support the motion, and it's not because at this point I'm opposed to the goats, it's just I don't like the way it's being processed through.
George, you want to speak to that, maybe you will?
Yes, I, I would, yeah. Well, the original, I don't know that I put a time, did I put a...
You said very near future.
You said very near future.
Very near future. That could be Mayor Jim. I agree, I agree, there's a lot going on. And I, and that's, so, so, and, and I realize this should not immediately bump up to first place, I'm not suggesting that either. So, the near future could be Mayor Jim, it's vague enough. And I think that we, you know, part of that, in fact, I'm willing to volunteer and work on this too, and do research, and, and contact Denver, and see what the, you know, what's it like? How's it working for three goats on 400 square feet? Are there lots of complaints? Is there an enforcement problem? I mean, you know, outside people can do a little research too, and I'm perfectly willing to do that, to contact some of the other cities that, that already have been doing this for a while, and see what some of the problems are, and just provide that research to staff. So I, I, I'm happy with, not making it the number one priority.
Partly the other piece of this is, I would guess that the neighborhood will want to weigh in, this is something that's going to impact folks, and so that, there's necessarily time that, that's required on that, and most of the neighborhood associations, one, they'll be also involved in a variety of things, but...
Can I just interject here, that what I think I'm hearing from George is he wants to respond to the people who have come with this issue, that it's on our agenda and we're moving on it. And he, I think, is asking that we move on it as rapidly as we can. I think he's also hearing you have restraints, but he doesn't want to feel like it's just going to go into the abyss and appear two years from now or something. So if, if we can work this through to where he feels like you're, you're going to work it in with the work as fast as you can, and it'll, and work it through the process, which will take time, because you have to invite neighbors, and you have to have the, the full deal.
At a reasonable pace.
At a reasonable pace. I want to hear from you, whether that makes sense to you, and then I want to ask George if that's okay.
That makes sense. No, that, that's my, my, my deal, and it won't be fast enough, would be it's before the end of the calendar year. I know that won't be fast enough for you. So if it's when you get back from your summer break, we can have it as soon as possible, right after your summer break, that might, would be more doable. Sure.
And so the only thing I was going to say before the mayor spoke was there, if you could, you know, at least have staff think about how it, it will integrate with the envision Eugene, that let them know that it's a priority for council, and, you know, I mean, after, you know, break is okay with me, I mean, when we come back in the fall, I mean, but there, you know, that's kind of what I'm thinking, is like, this is one of our priorities.
Okay.
I think it will make people who, including counselors, and people out in the community who care about it, feel that it's being intended to, if we can kind of have a, a, with your help, a little sequencing of when that, we might see it come back, so, so that people...
We can do that, we can provide that. Well, before, obviously, then, we can come back with a little bit more on the sequencing, a little bit more how it can...
We can just kind of look out there and see here it's coming.
We definitely will do that, that would be fine.
So everybody okay with that? Okay? George is still not okay.
I'm, I'm okay.
But that George isn't.
Oh.
But it's okay. Okay, so with that understanding that we just talked about, all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, and opposition, one. It passes. Thank you all for working on that, and working on that together. All right, we're going to move on to the next item where we're going to give another job baby.
Yeah, we'll take another job.
Which we enjoy doing.
Uh, we're going to deal with the bag van discussion, plastic bag van discussion. City manager?
Ethan, yes.
I heard you snoring a bit.
Ethan Nelson will take us through this item.
I think he's going to blind you, Mayor.
Oh, I'm going to get out of the way?
Got a short PowerPoint, a presentation to go through. So Ethan Nelson, Waste Ranch and Green Building Manager, and responding to Councilor Selenka's work session poll on reuse of, or excuse me, should the city promote the use of usable bags by promoting the use of single-use plastic bags by retail establishments? There we go. So, just a short overview of presentation, excuse me, a little bit about Eugene history, plastic bags, and these are all questions, the work session poll. What did Oregon Legislature efforts on bag vans? Environmental benefits, calculus around waste, environmental benefits and impacts, social equity concerns, and then recommendations. Just a little bit about our program. We handle rebuilding practices here in the city, and there's three main areas of our programs that are focused in on outreach and education, technical assistance and incentives, and in four different areas, so green buildings, one composting urban agriculture, so the urban agriculture and the goats, I was listening intently, recycling and zero waste, and rates and regulations. Go to our website, you get more information on that stuff. So a short history of plastic bags in, in Eugene. So in 2009, in seven, excuse me, the city of Eugene was recipient of American Plastics Association grant that funded a number of different plastic bag containers that were put in at local groceries for folks to do a take-back. And so a lot of, I know that Market of Choice or Franklin still has some of those, and I, I know that there's still some out in the community. The program was really predicated upon staff involvement, and there was a staff member basically driving around picking up bags, and so it was discontinued in 2009 just because of an efficiency standpoint, and also at that time with the recession, the recycling markets crashed, and there wasn't a huge market for film, plastic film. At the same time, in 2008, Santa PAC had moved to allow households to recycle bags in commingled carts, and that ended up in, shut down in 2008 again, or 2007, sorry, 2008 it ended. And the main reason there was they were getting a lot of contamination at the material recovery facilities, typically called MRFs, MRFs. And so that program was discontinued. In 2008, the Lain County Commissioners, at the quest of a concerned citizen, looked at a bag tax, this was the same time that Seattle, Washington was looking at a bag tax, I think it was 15 cents to, and, and when they started looking at it, there was no action due to the complexity, and then there was also public input about, is this the right thing to do at the, at the right time? In 2010, Oregon Legislature, with Senate Bill 1009, was a statewide bag ban, and we supported that, IGR supported it. And then in, but it didn't pass. In this last legislative session, 2011, Senate Bill 536, was again at the table, this one got a little bit more fanfare, because there was a lot of heavy involvement from Hilex Poly, which is a South Carolina bag manufacturer that came out in opposition of the, of the ban, and it didn't move out of, out of session, and so it didn't make to the floor. So we, but we had supported, it was very comprehensive, and, and so 2012, we are here with a bag ban discussion again. Portland ordinance, in July 2011, the ordinance was passed, and it prohibits bags for stores, and this is the definitions getting on into the details. A store is a full-line self-service retail store with over $2 million in annual sales, or has over 10,000 square foot of retail pharmacy and, or space in pharmacy. It does provide exemptions for low-income residents, and it does not require a fee for other disposable bags. The Oregon Legislature in 2011, so what, what did they propose? This is a graphic that I pulled off of Seattle's website, because this is what Seattle has now just passed, and it's basically, they're promoting reusable bags, they're banning single-use plastic retail bags, they are requiring a, at least a nickel deposit on single-use paper bags, and they're saying that it's okay for like vegetable or meats to be wrapped in, in a, in a plastic bag, kind of in the produce section, so. And that is, would, would be focused on all retail establishments.
You say deposit, is that a refundable deposit?
Excuse me, it's not a deposit, it's a fee.
A fee.
Thank you. So switching on into the environmental benefits, there, I, I looked at this and kind of some, a lot of the literature out there, and research analysis on it, it was really three main areas to assess, and so there's the litter, kind of the waste production, and then life cycle analysis, I'll go through each of those. So from a litter standpoint, really there's minor impacts for our local infrastructure. I checked in with our parks and open space staff about how they, is it a priority for them for dealing with plastic bags in open space and wetlands instead, and, and water waste, and also with our public works maintenance staff around what's the impact to stormwater systems? And they sent some photos of some of the storm outflows, and there's, there are plastic bags along with typical other flots and jets, and they don't see it as a main issue that they've identified as a priority to, to, to target, so. And then unknown impacts to wildlife locally. We've got a lot of data about what it's doing to marine environments, but really don't have a lot of clean data and research around what's happening locally. So I think it's just kind of quantifying in that sense. Waste reduction, and so plastic film, in the staff report that was submitted, plastic film has a very wide-ranging definition, and plastic bags are but one portion of that, and we're not sure about what part plastic bags are of plastic film. But for plastic film in 2010, and this comes off of DEQ's annual waste studies, and also one that we issued with, in conjunction with Lain County for waste composition study in 2010. We found that, you know, total recycled for plastic film is in the state of 12,000, just over 12,000 tons, almost 13,000 tons, which is about 2% of all recycled material. Saw that a total landfill of plastic film in Eugene was 663 tons, and so it's about 0.63% of the total that is landfill. And based on some of the estimates of average bag use by US residents, there's nothing, you know, we haven't done any research about what Eugenians, how many you use, but figure we're averaging, and, and so 67 million bags a year are used. A pretty large number. Life, and I think it's in the billions, it's one and a half billion is what I heard earlier in Oregon.
Wow, cool.
So we've got, well, there's a lot out there. Then there's, comes a life cycle analysis, and there's a lot of heavy literature out there around paper, plastic, reusable, and the environmental benefits. And I think this is kind of the main takeaway is that it depends upon what assumptions you put on in there when you're doing your life cycle analysis, and really what's your main issue? Are you looking at litter, are you looking at climate and carbon emissions, are you looking at impacts to water and aquatic systems? And so I, you know, it's, 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 it's precise science, but it depends upon what you put on into the mix, is what I get at, and so I can't really say, this one stands on out. In terms of council goals to reduce solid waste, the Climate Energy Action Plan has a number of consumption and waste strategies to increase waste diversion and reduce climate impacts of the waste our community generates, but there's no explicit item that targets plastic bags. We do have Oregon Advice Statutes 459A, which is in course of opportunity to recycle, and it really sets on out waste generation and diversion rates. And the Lain County Wayshed, which we are the main generator within the Lain County Wayshed, and that's how it's broken down at the state, it's not by watersheds, but by waysheds. The recovery rate was, is mandated at a 54% by 2009, and it's really a, kind of a visionary, inspirational goal. And, but currently, the rate in 2010 was at 57.4, which includes credits, which you get if you run different programs, which Eugene does really well on. So we're, we're meeting our, a lot of our goals around waste recovery and diversion. Economic costs and benefits, I've kind of looked at it two ways. There's societal costs and benefits, and individual consumer costs and benefits, and in the staff report, I only was able to incorporate individual consumer costs, and as I was preparing for this, I was thinking of the broader picture as well. And so I looked at Seattle Public Utilities in their 2008 evaluation, they had a large life cycle analysis and economic analysis done. And really what came on out of it, the takeaway is that education, plastic bag ban would provide the greatest economic benefit to all parties, which would be consumers, retail, regional manufacturing, and also the public agencies. But it would not be cost neutral, there's still continuing costs put in there, and if we want to get into details, I can, I've got a slide at the end, we can look at that. But then in terms of individual consumer cost benefits, LA County ran a cost benefit analysis, or consultants for LA County did, around a proposed banned bag, and what they came up with is, and this was in the staff report, and I modified it for Eugene, because we didn't have a, a sales tax, roughly be $4.93 per person per year would be the, the financial impact around a bag ban.
Is that a cost or a benefit?
Uh, that's a, well, it's an, it's an economic cost, so it would be the impact, so it would be out-of-pocket $4.93 per year. Social equity concerns, and so this is back to the cost, the impact, currently cost for bags is embedded in costs for the product, and so we already pay a cost annually for the amount of plastic bags that are in the system, and it just goes on into product prices. Plastic bag bans would have an increased impact to low, low-income residents, and so you'd see that nickel fee in, so. But most municipal ban programs provide exemptions to the fee, and/or provide no in low-cost reusable bags to community members. So it's a cradle principle, the offset, the impacts. So it's a cradle principle, the offset the impacts. Our gauging interest, so you can always gauge interest in a, in a issue by editorial cartoons, which I omitted from this, and also, and also the creativity of the citizenry. And earlier today at a press conference, and I'm bummed that we don't have one today, is we had a bag monster.
I think you're going to see later.
We'll see tonight at the, at the regular council meeting. But in other communities, you have hordes of bag monsters coming on to press the issue. So hopefully we will get to see, you'll get to see a bag monster, they're pretty cool. So.
Celebration.
Our recommendation, staff's recommendation is conduct further analysis and outreach to the impacted businesses to develop a program recommendation, including scope, budget and timeline by the fall of 2012. That, that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. I've got Betty George. Alan, did you want to say something to start out with since you're?
Yeah, sure. My, my favorite cartoon, it was a little different take on it, was the executioner with the black hood and guy's about to be executed and he comes up and says, "Paper or plastic?" That was, I've been working with.
Can you get on me? Chickens.
I've been working with the Northwest Grocers Association, Environment Oregon, Surf Rider, Oregon League Conservation Voters to develop a model ordinance to promote the use of reusable bags at retail establishments by doing two things. One, by banning single-use plastic carryout bags with some exceptions and create a pay-as-you-go system by allowing retail establishments to recoup their costs through a pass-through of at least five cents for a recyclable paper bag. And this mitigates the substantial potential cost shift for larger retail establishments. The ordinance is based on that, the ordinance that was in the legislature that narrowly missed passage in this last session. To me, the environmental benefits are pretty clear. Nearly 67 million plastic bags every year in Eugene, it's a good chunk of that becomes litter. 1% to 2% of it's recycled, so it's not recycled. They're not biodegradable, they last forever. They do harm wildlife, especially marine life. It's also consistent with our city council goals and the Climate and Energy Action Plan. The annual cost, I think, is quite modest, less than $5 a year. And that can be avoided almost entirely if you use a reusable bag, which is actually common, common practice for a lot of folks in Eugene already. And I know that Market of Choice eliminated plastic carryout bags altogether a long time ago, actually. And then finally on the, on the economic side, I think one of the interesting things about plastic versus paper, we create paper bags in Oregon, we don't create any plastic bags in Oregon. So I think it's a jobs issue as well. Social equity concerns, I think, are mitigated a large degree by exempting low-income folks that are on WIC and other cities like Portland and other folks have worked with manufacturers and other nonprofits to promote and to get low-cost bags out, similar to what we did when we did the composters. We got manufacturers to give us a good deal on that and we got them out to folks. I think Portland's doing that and other folks. So I think the model ordinance that's in your, your packet is, has good definition of what a single-use carryout plastic bag is, good definition of what a retail establishment is, and it has reasonable exemptions in it. And I think this is a low-burden regulation. It's the right thing to do and I encourage you to all support it.
Thank you.
And I asked the city manager about the timeline there because I thought fall was a little far out there. Do you want to respond to that, John?
And this is one where I suggested we would bring it back before the summer break. So that would be my suggestion.
So before I go down the list of all the folks that are in the queue, I did want to say that we do have a history of supporting this already. So it is something that our city has already taken positions on in the past with the legislature. I'd also like to say this morning when I heard Julie Daniel talk, one of the costs that I didn't see here that she talked about was how the plastic bags clog up the machines that deal with waste and cost it an incredible amount of time and lost work time in unclogging, having to go in individually and get those, chop those plastic bags out of the machines to get, to have them keep being able to work. And she did point out that when they go through any kind of process, they twist and they just get stronger and stronger. And so it becomes a huge issue of how we deal with waste in the community. I've got Betty and then George Poling, then George Brown, then Andrea and then Chris.
And Beth.
And then, okay.
Well, how would you do an exemption and why for low-income people?
That, I'm unsure. I'm going to answer that.
I think that was about charging them for bags.
Oh, I thought you meant they get an exemption, they'd be able to get a plastic bag.
I thought it was, that wouldn't be.
No, they wouldn't get a, a plastic bag, they would get a.
An exemption from the fee.
A reusable bag.
Oh, okay. And is there such a thing as, does anyone notice such a thing as biodegradable bags? I use those for dog waste and they're for sale everywhere. Is there such a thing as biodegradable grocery bags?
Yes, there are. And that was one of the items that was in the Portland ordinance, which I would, we don't have it in the council's, I think, with model, model ordinance. And I, we wouldn't want to do that simply because we're already facing a large amount of contamination in our commercial composting program that we sent on out right now and having biodegradable bags and plastic bags. It just starts to add a lot more complexity for our local composters. And so it's one area where we're trying not to, until we maybe have got a system that is able to not have so much contamination.
And the biodegradable ones would be contaminating or?
Some of the composters do not accept biodegradable bags into their system.
Okay. Thank you, that's all.
George Poling?
So in the intended motion that Alan sent out, there's a date of April 16 for the next public hearing. Is that doable? That's not going to be doable? Be?
No, what we would say is before the end, before your summer break. And so that's fine, it's going to be past that.
Well, you know, I'm looking forward to moving this on to the next step. You know, I've talked to a number of people in the grocery industry that work in my ward and they're, they're all pretty much on the same page. And they all pretty much said the same thing, that it's, it's industry-wide, it's happening anyway. So, you know, my problem is, is I can never remember bringing reusable bags back and I've got a carload full of them and I just, I keep forgetting, so I just buy brand-new ones every time. So, yeah, I, I'm, I'm interested in seeing how this progresses and I'm willing to support the, the motion on this.
George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've been in the grocery business for 40 years and we were probably the last grocery store on the planet to offer plastic bags to our customers as check stand. We held off, we held off, we held off. Finally, after pretty intense customer demand, we relented and, you know, a large percentage of our customers loved it. We probably, I don't have the exact statistics, we probably use paper bags four to one over plastic. We do not generate a lot of plastic bags at that store. We have a super-high percentage, probably close to 50% or more of our customers already bring in their own bags or their backpacks. They're very, very well, you know, sensitive to, to all these issues. I, I will support the measure. I mean, it's, the plastic bags do contribute to contamination of the ocean and endangering the marine animals and, and not just the ocean. I mean, I'm sure there's, there's domestic animals, domestic birds that it causes problems to too. The only problem I have with the proposed ordinance is the, the cost pass-through, like requiring the vendors, and it's not just grocery stores, it's any, any vendor that uses bags at the check stand to pack customers' items in, is forcing the vendors to charge customers for a service that they've, previously we've always provided for free. And I really don't think that the city council or the state or any other government body has any business telling the vendors what they can and cannot charge their customers. I mean, you know, it's, it's, all the grocery stores are offering this service for, for free. And the cost to the stores is, it's built into your cost of doing business. And you look at all that at the end of the year and you go, oh my gosh, we have to raise our markup 0.0025 of a percent to, to cover the increased cost of the paper bags. Paper bags are more, quite a bit more expensive than plastic bags. So some stores may have to raise their prices minutely over the course of a year to cover that cost. But I don't believe, I, I don't believe that we vendors should be forced to charge our customers for a service like that. I, I think it's intrusive meddling, frankly. But I support all the rest of it. And I, and one thing I do like about Councilor Zalinka's modification of Portland's ordinance is that he included all vendors, not just grocery stores, but all, that would be, you know, the big box stores and home improvement stores. And I'm just wondering if there's any value to adding wholesalers to that list of vendors besides retail vendors. Thank you.
Andrea?
Well, so, thank you. So my, I'm, I'm in support of this, I like your timeline, I'll say manager, but I'm just, so this is just kind of a dog chasing its tail really as far as, you know, plastic used to be what we use and so now we're going to go back to paper. And then we'll, I just, I hope we don't hear from the people who were concerned about the forest of how many trees we're going to have to cut down to make these paper sacks. You know, I just, that's in the back of my head. I agree with George 100% about the pass-through cost. I think that there are a lot of people in the community who don't have more than a nickel to waste. And I think that charging them is really not okay. You know, I just think, I go to Winco, I shop a lot there and, and people, you know, you see people struggling. And so I would, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to support that, that pass-through cost. If anything, I would hope that the stores would incentivize people to bring their bags by, like Fred Meyer gives you three cents a pop until there's Winco, I think, you know, if you bring your own bags, I think that would, that's a much better, better way of doing things. Thank you.
Chris?
Thanks. I really appreciate Alan bringing this forward. I think it's, it is an important issue to talk about. It reminds me of the discussions around bottle deposits, you know, 30 years ago, 40 years ago. And it is in a similar vein. What I would want to do though is be real thoughtful in how this moves forward. And I'm, I'm willing to go with, with option three in the new timeline and the new, and the new modifications. But something that I think we ultimately want to look at is not just replace plastic bags with paper bags, because if you look at the comparisons of impacts, it takes more BTUs, takes more water, more trees, more CO2 to develop a paper bag than it is a plastic bag. So the ultimate goal is not to just trade, to trade plastic bags for paper bags. The ultimate goal is to remove them all from, from that, you know, disposable bags of whatever construct. So this might be a step down the road, but I wouldn't want it to think we solved our problem by banning plastic bags, because we won't, we will have not solved our problem. But I think it will perhaps start to move us, move us in a positive direction, the way bottle deposits kept a lot of cans out of the waste stream. This, this may have a similar impact. So I do think we need the time to work this very carefully, because I do want the ultimate outcome to be net positive and not just trading one problem for another. And so the notion of how money fits into this, whether it's through a charge for recycling, a charge for use, a charge for whatever, that does take into account low-income folks. And how do you make sure it's a low-income person? What is the methodology for doing that? Do you have a card? Do you identify yourself? Do you wear a sign around your neck? You know, how do you identify somebody as qualifying for certain kinds of bags? Just logistical stuff that needs to be worked out. I probably talked about this a lot up in Salem for all I know, but I'd be interested in knowing what the conversation's been. That all expands your timeline, takes more time to do that work. So that's why I'm very sensitive to, I want to, I want to hear a lot about it and I want to know what that timeline is. So that is a factor. The only reason I'll support this if it does take the time necessary to really be thoughtful about it.
Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I don't have a problem with retailers charging for the bag or even being asked or having a standard for charging for the bag. It does offer some retailers perhaps a competitive advantage by saying free bags. So somebody may have a little bit of fun with that. Also point out that our hometown Jerry's Home Improvement Center banned plastic bags some time ago. They've been using nothing but, but paper bags. When I worked there, we had boxes and mailbags. That was a long time ago. I, you know, we, this has been argued and debated throughout the Northwest, include, indeed throughout the nation. And I was wondering if you could articulate to me, what are the arguments against having such an ordinance? Clearly, I've heard lots of arguments in favor of it tonight. Who's arguing against it? What do they say when they argue against such an ordinance?
We like to make plastic.
I can.
In terms of the, kind of two sides, the, the opposition to bag bans is really focusing in on recycling and that we should bolster our recycling infrastructure and that it has a, there's a, a market for the material and then, and, and working on that. So that's one of the, the main concerns. And then it gets on into consumer choice and also then other aspects have been health and human safety, which jury's still out depending upon which research and who's funded that research.
That's surrounding sanitation of reusable bags?
Yeah. So, so that's, just kind of encapsulates those, those main items there.
So nothing that I haven't heard then? Okay. There's nothing, no new arguments on the horizon that, okay, very good, thank you.
Alan, you're next, and then George Brown?
So responding to a couple of things, they, and the biodegradable bags, my understanding is they don't necessarily degrade unless you get really high temperatures, like 180 degrees. So you wouldn't be able to do that in your own home composter and some other places don't get that high and so they don't, they don't break down. So that's one of the problems with, why they banned, they don't like them in composting bins. One of the issue, one of the ways to handle the issue that George and Andrea brought up is at the bottom of page two, it talks about the cost pass-through and says the retail establishment shall and then charge at least five percent, five cents. We could change that to may and leave it up to the establishment whether or not they want to do that and doesn't require them to do that. That would be one way to fix that. Chris, in regard to the greenhouse gas footprint, I've got, I didn't include it in the stuff that I handed out to people, but the bag, paper bag people said that paper bags are 59% less greenhouse gases produced than plastic bags. So it's, you know, battling.
Damn statistics.
Damn, right. So it's, that's why I didn't include it, because it came from the paper bag people. So I think it's important, especially for folks at home, to get clear about what a carryout bag is. And I'll just read the definition and the model. It's any bag that's provided by a retail establishment at the point of sale to a customer for use to transport or carry away purchases such as merchandise, goods, food from the retail establishment. It does not include packaged bulk items such as fruit, vegetables, nuts, grains and small hardware items. So if you still go to the vegetable section, you still use the plastic bags. Or contain or wrap frozen foods, meat, fish. Doesn't contain wrapping flowers, potted plants and doesn't contain unwrapped prepared foods or bakery goods in pharmacy prescription bags, nor does it include newspaper bags, door hangers, laundry cleaning bags, pet waste bags, garbage bags, yard waste bags or, or product bags, which is a bag that is surrounding a particular product. So it took a lot of time crafting what this really is about. And it's really about those, those carryout bags at stores. And the retail establishment and especially the definition of vendor is any retail establishment, shop, restaurant, sales outlet or other commercial establishment located in the city. So I think it does cover most of them, including, and then of course grocery, grocery stores, which is supermarkets, convenience stores or gasoline stations are included in there as well. And, and there is also a provision in here about what a, a paper bag is and that it needs to be recyclable, 100% recyclable and that have a minimum of 40% post-consumer recycled content. So it is a, it's a high-quality recyclable and recycled content paper bag. And then finally on the, on the, on the low-income folks, you can exempt the WIC people, but the federal law, food stamps, doesn't allow you to require people to identify themselves as a food stamp recipient. So you can't say, if you're a, a food stamp recipient, you can get this bag, but you can allow the retailers to do that. But you can't say that in the legislature, in the ordinance by federal law. You can't identify those people.
George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I like the idea of changing the phrase, shall charge a nickel to may charge a nickel. I really think that, you know, a lot of vendors are ready to do something like this and I don't think there'll be. I don't think there'll be a lot, I think we've all been thinking about this for years, some more intensely than others, and I don't think there'll be a tremendous amount of opposition to it, and I would rather see the vendors incentivize in a positive way people to bring their own bags, and I really like the idea of, you said Winco, it's three to five, I mean, vendors could offer three, or five, or 10 cent, you know, knock it off the bill, and reward people for, for not using a paper bag, that's just one way. At our store, we sell, and I'm sure other stores do the same, and maybe, you know, even a lot more, but we sell three types of heavy-duty bags, one of which we sell at a nickel above our cost, and we've had special promotions where we've given away 200 or 300, you know, it's like our 40th anniversary, we gave, we gave away hundreds and hundreds of strong-
Store.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but I mean, the reason I mentioned-
It's Jerry commercial.
Well, no, there ain't, no, I didn't say the name of the store.
Yet.
A grocery, a grocery store.
Okay.
So being, I'm just illustrating that this is a way that the stores can, can incentivize people not, not using even paper bags in a positive way, and, you know, there'll be a generous amount of time for all the stores to reuse up their old plastic bags, that's fair, and, and stores will get creative and use that time to, to do outreach, positive outreach, and educate their customers about the benefits of, you know, of bringing your own bags, so I, I think it's really good, and the sooner we do it, the better. Thank you.
So I think the bags that you bring in is a really interesting question, and I'd really like to know what the experience has been in Seattle and some other places where they've tried to give people reusable bags, and what the issues are, because I think you, like me, probably have a ton of those that, more than you need, it's just a matter of, I'd like to know what the safety issues are and that kind of thing. And I also thought that maybe at the time we discuss it again, it'd be interesting to have Brenda be part of the conversation, since she heard probably all the debate at the, at the state level, and could answer those kinds of questions. All right, okay, you want to put it on the table, Alan?
So I have to modify this. Move to proceed with variation options. Direct staff to develop an ordinance to promote the use of usable bags and ban plastic bags, similar to the model ordinance included in the packet, and schedule this item and conduct the research, identify an option two in the packet to be brought back to council before final action before-
Summer break.
-summer break.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Okay, I don't see any further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven in favor, none in opposition, it passes, and with that conclude our business of the work session.